The July 10, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Buckley?
Present.
Ms. Jisling?
Present.
Mrs. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle, recorded absent. Mrs. Briner?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in its fold with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to welcome everyone to the July 10, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda Assistant Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on spectrum cable, Channel 1026 in Mentor and Channel 1025 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. And next, we will have approval of minutes for June 12 Regular Board Meeting and June 28 Special Board Meeting.
So moved.
Well, Mary, I was not at the second meeting, so I have to abstain from that second one.
All right, and you're going to abstain as well. So I will second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Abstain.
Mrs. Roberts?
Abstain.
Are we okay to move on, Mr. Wilson? Okay. Next, we'll have hearing of the public on agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll move on. Superintendent's report and recommendations. Mr. Porter.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President and members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 5A1 through 5A2.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. And I just wanted to mention, I had spoken with Mr. Buckley about our mentor literacy program that perhaps with the advent of our partnership with the public library at the high school, that that might be an excellent location to kind of revive interest or expand awareness of that opportunity for folks who may be interested.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the board, at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Casella and Mrs. Briner to the podium to recognize our athletes who qualified for the state track meet.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson, it's my pleasure to introduce to you members of the boys and girls track and field teams who qualified and represented Mentor High School at the state track and field meet in Columbus last month. Our boys and girls track and field teams had another fine season with several great individual and team performances. Several school, league, and area records were broken in the process. Both teams won district titles and had several qualifiers to our regional meet. From the regional meet, we had the following athletes qualify to perform at the state meet. Our boys head coach, Bill Dennison, couldn't be with us tonight, but girls head coach, Bob Burwold, so I would ask him to join us up front here, please. So our state qualifiers as members of the girls' team, Paige Floria. Paige qualified in the 100, 200, 4x200 relay and finished third in the state in the long jump as a freshman. We look for big things coming from Paige. Sarah Lane. Sarah qualified in the 4x200 meter relay and the 4x400 meter relay. Not here. Katie Perry. Katie qualified in the high jump here at Mentor High. Emma Potter. Emma qualified in the 400, the 4x200 relay, and the 4x400 relay. Stephanie Scala. She qualified in the 4x200 meter relay. Kaitlin Unitic. She qualified in the 4x400 meter relay. She was unable to be here. Riley Yocum, also qualified in the 4x400 relay. She was unable to be here. Kayla Zidanowicz. Kayla here. She was injured, but she was part of the qualifying 4x2 and 4x400 meter relays. We also had a male from our boys' team, Caden McGing. He qualified in the high jump. Is Caden here tonight? He didn't make it as well. So these are our state qualifiers this year from the track and field teams.
Congratulations. Thanks for a great season. Congratulations to all, and we're going to take a five-minute break. Anyone who would like to leave is welcome to do so, or you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Madam President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of the following replacement and revised levies, Policy 1.00 and Policy 8.18.
Mr. Porter, on Policy 1.00, on the mission statement, I see that the, under the vision, the vision statements are current and aligned. I would like to suggest that the last line of this policy where it says, "The annually updated strategic plan shall be a basis for validating and updating the district's vision," and I would like to have "and goals" be added. Without the goals, there's really nothing to evaluate.
Okay.
So I know it's wordsmithing, but...
That's all right. You're saying, so it would be in addition at the end of that sentence?
Correct. Just add "and goals."
Any further discussion on that before we...
Does it make sense?
Mr. Wilson, we come back with that at a...
We can accept that as part of the second reading tonight.
To the vote tonight?
Yes.
Okay. If we can entertain that possibility with the words "and goals" added at the end of that entire policy, I would put that forth.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. I am also recommending approval of the 2018-2019 Parent-Student Handbooks for the elementary schools, middle schools, high school, and cares.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I am recommending approval of the resolution adopting a 2018-2019 Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan.
Mr. Porter, I had some questions about that. My first question is, is there a standard or an advanced organizer that is set out for the teachers as they're planning these make-up lessons?
We have, in the contract, we have very specific language about the posting of lessons that extends beyond what the state, you know, that, kind of the state adopted policy, and we've had good success with that the last few years that's been in effect.
Okay. And does the teacher, department chair, or principal validate these assignments, or is it just left up to the teacher?
It's been a combination of things over the, you know, the years that we've had, sort of the calamity lessons. But what has the huge advantages now versus how it used to be a canned lesson that could be plugged in at any time during the year, and it wasn't necessarily time-appropriate? Now, it's the continuation of learning as expected.
Okay.
So really, one of the best gauges of that, not only do principals, you know, I'm not going to say they look at every lesson every single time, but a lot of times, we will hear, if there's something that's awry, we will hear from parents, we will hear from students that, you know, something is not quite right. But we've had good success with that, and it allows learning to continue even when we've had some of the calamity days.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments?
Need a motion.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, I'm recommending approval of the 2019-2020 school year calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I was glad that it seemed like it was, it's still early, but it's not as early as this year, so it was a much better...
We're trying to be sensitive to the weather and the heat.
Yeah, no, I thought it looked better. And I know it's early, and that is clearly the overwhelming trend among districts everywhere.
Agreed.
That's for sure. Before the tests.
All right, please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes. Though it hurts my heart because my daughter, my last one, will graduate in 2020.
Moving on to Section C.
Madam President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified staff and C2 through C5, all related human resource matters.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. And even though he was approved at the recent June 28 Board Meeting, I would like to give our new Mentor High School unit principal, Jeremy Rothstein, a moment to say a few words. Mrs. Burnett will introduce Jeremy.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. This evening, I am very proud to introduce to you our new unit principal at Mentor High School for the 1819 school year, Mr. Jeremy Rothstein. Mr. Rothstein graduated with his bachelor's degree from Kent State University with a middle childhood licensure in the area of math and science. He soon began his teaching career at Notre Dame Cathedral Latin and soon transitioned to the Chagrin Falls School District as a middle school teacher. He has administrative experience at Chardon Middle School as an assistant principal and was previously the assistant principal at Ravenna High School. He enjoys spending time with his wife Gina and son Luca, and we are very excited to welcome Jeremy to our administrative staff and to the Cardinal family. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson, thank you for the opportunity to be Unit 10 Principal at Mentor High School. As Ms. Burnett said, I have had the pleasure of working in NDCL, Chagrin Falls, Chardon, and Ravenna prior to my hiring at Mentor. I'm delighted to have my wife Gina, Luca, who's, obviously, you can hear, and then we have our second son due in October. A little quicker. They're my pride and joy. I'm a student-centered educator. My favorite thing is to build relationships with students, along with that, staff, parents, community members. Mentor High School is a premier institution of learning with a heavy focus for students on 21st century skills, which is what drew me to this position, allowing for success outside of high school. And I like to focus on three Es, so looking at enlistment, employment, enrollment, something after high school that students can, you know, focus on and be successful in, whether that's higher learning, the military, or just beginning their career. I'm excited to be able to call myself a Cardinal today and always, as they say here in Mentor, I don't know if they use the hashtag, but once a card, I see it all over Twitter, so I'm excited to be able to use that hashtag, and I thank you again for this opportunity.
I like that multitasking. That's very good.
You're welcome. Expecting great things.
My kids will give me their real skinny on you soon.
Thank you, and this concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
Thank you. All right, first up, we have business. Mr. Wilson, did you want to?
Yes. As the board knows, we've been expanding our partnership with the Mentor Public Library. Organizationally, they're officially the Mentor Exempted Village School District Public Library System under the state laws. We serve the same public and have always looked for ways to partner and expand the service to our community. The library board has taken action on an agreement that will give them access to operate library programs in our high school hub, beginning with this coming academic year. And we had some pilot days, as the board knows. They were successful and encouraged us to continue to grow our partnership. So we're very excited about this opportunity, and I believe the agreement is consistent with the various drafts that we shared with the board throughout the process of refining it and perfecting it for your consideration. The initial term will be for one year, beginning July 1 of '18 through June 3 of '19, and will automatically renew for additional one-year terms unless one of the two parties would deem it necessary to no longer continue the joint access. So we're, again, very excited about this and asking the board to formally adopt the agreement.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, concerns, comments?
I'm so excited. I think it's such a natural partnership in a library.
Near and dear.
This is right up my alley.
That's why she said, "So moved."
That's right. That's right. This is a very exciting development, and I really appreciate leadership on our side of the equation and Cheryl and her team making, and the board making it work. So happy for the kids, happy for the community.
I would just like to add that we are always looking at ways to try to bring the community in to our schools, and this is just another option, another way that we can do that, bring the stakeholders in and let them participate in all that our schools have to offer. So we hope that the community will take advantage of that, and we want to thank the library for that partnership. So we will, please, call the roll. Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
And the director of the Mentor Public Library is here, Cheryl Quonan. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Yes.
Yes. That'd be great.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Quonan, the executive director of the Mentor Public Library, and I just wanted to say that we are so excited, I'm kind of going to echo everything you guys have said. We are so excited for this partnership and to bring your amazing hub facility to the community. We think that the community is going to be really excited, hopefully as excited as us, and we can't wait to start. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right, and Mr. Wilson, was there a second item you wanted to present?
Yes, we do have an addendum item. We distributed to the board earlier today. As the board knows, part of our sustaining the employment of one-to-one student devices includes selling used machines while there's still some value to them, but they're nearing the end of their practical life. Now we have the opportunity to sell some machines. Mr. Hartman's determined this is an opportune time to maybe accelerate the sales process to leverage the market for best pricing. These are 12th grade machines that were turned back in and 8th grade machines that were turned back in that will be recycled again for incoming freshmen, incoming sixth graders at our middle schools. The higher revised code requires that when the cumulative value is greater than $10,000, we must advertise and conduct a public auction for the sale, and if not successful, then we can proceed to private sale. So tonight's resolution gives us the authority to do the advertising, to conduct the auction, to hopefully time the market for the best possible pricing.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, concerns, comments? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Any other business for the board? Moving on to legislative report, I know Mr. Tuttle is not here. Did anyone have anything under legislative report?
No.
No? Okay, we'll move on to Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, just a couple brief comments. As the board knows, our fiscal year-end is June 30, and we've distributed on a delayed basis, but we distributed electronically and gave you a print copy tonight of our fiscal year-end financial statements. Overall, again, we had a successful year, continued to refine our budgeting model. On the revenue side, we had a positive 4.8% variance. The majority of that, it was the collection of prior delinquencies and higher current collections, primarily spurred by changes in the federal tax laws that limit the deductibility of taxes. And working with Lorraine Fendi, our county treasurer, she determined not an exact dollar amount, but a very significant amount of the collections were early payments in December to take advantage of the tax laws before they changed. As the board knows, we changed our investment advisors, and that combined with markets improving, investments outperformed the budget by 65% or $428,000. And the legislative action that slowed the phase-out of tangible personal property reimbursements added about $810,000 to the positive variance. So we're very pleased that the revenues track above budget for understandable reasons. On the expense side, as the board knows, we're trying to refine our salary budget models, and the budget was underspent by 1.2% for salaries. Benefits was underspent by 3.3%, primarily attributed to the 0% rate increase for health care in January. And out-of-district payments for students with special needs was 25% under budget. Some of that may be a timing issue, but overall, expenses were 4.7% less than budgeted. So we did have another successful year, and we'll use the final performance as our baseline for preparing the new budget. In addition to approving the financial statements, we're presenting approval to June investment transactions, approval of inter-fund transfers, appropriation modifications, and supplemental appropriations, and presented in Exhibit 7-A through E.
Motion?
I just had one quick question. The extraordinary containment of our health care costs has been just remarkable and had such a positive impact on the overall finances of the district. I was curious, now that Lake Health has been up and running with their wellness center, do you have an idea of how many of our staff members have chosen to participate?
We have over 200 now, and the number is continuing to grow. There was a very significant initial interest in it, not just those switching memberships from existing, but those that wanted to take advantage of the facility to enable them to pursue a healthier lifestyle. Working with the District-wide Insurance Committee, MTA, and MCE, we were able to develop an incentive program for the use that requires a physician-supervised program initially, as well as a physical to establish a starting point for an individual to monitor use. So we believe this is contributing, along with our partnership to have an onsite clinic and continuing to monitor the marketplace, have all contributed to our successes.
And has the walk-in clinic that was at the high school, has that been transferred yet, or it's still waiting?
It's in the process. It will open August, the first week in August, and again, will be an extension of the urgent care, but will have a separate entrance dedicated to us, a separate waiting room. We will share examination rooms. We continue to have the same physician that staffed it this year.
Excellent. So I make a motion and to approve.
You made the motion, Shetty?
Yes, please.
Second?
Oh, second, sorry. I'm thinking.
Any other questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
That completes my items for this evening.
Thank you. Unfinished business?
Yes, I do have one item. I placed before you a draft policy, general fund operating budget reserve. This is a follow-up to last month's meeting where I was requested to begin to work on a draft policy to recognize the soundness and prudent fiscal management best practices that establish a reserve fund for unexpected occurrences. And before presenting it for a first reading, I wanted to present it to the board tonight to see if I'm going down the right path on this based on the comments from last month's meeting and the board's thoughts. As I had mentioned before in our recent work session, I looked at best practices, both at the state and national level. I looked at neighboring districts. The majority of districts still do not have a formal budget reserve, that those that do range anywhere from 20% or 50% of their budget, the 50% is an outlier, orange schools here in northeast Ohio. The most typical range is 15% to 25%. The best practices nationally recommend two months, which would be 16.7%. So I landed that, given our stable situation here in our district, I am suggesting a 15% of total general fund revenues be the amount placed in a reserve fund, and that it can only be used with express authority of the Board of Education for extraordinary one-time needs, unexpected expenditures due to natural disasters or emergencies, or to avoid cash flow borrowing. And hopefully, we don't ever return to those days. It would also then replenish the fund if it drops below the target amount by taking any revenues in excess of expenses in any future fiscal years and moving it to replenish the fund and restore it to the 15% level. So again, based on best practices that we identified, both in establishing an amount and how to use the fund, I captured all that in this first draft. So I would ask if the board can give some guidance or feedback, and then we can prepare a policy for first a policy for first reading next month.
Dan, the 15% translates to how many days of instruction?
Um...
Or is that not calculated yet?
Well, let's see. I've got to do mental math now.
I'm sorry.
Roughly...
Twenty-five days.
Hundred-million-dollar budget. Excuse me, I'm going to have to pull out my calculator here, but I can give you a pretty good estimation.
Sorry, 25 days roughly. Yeah, because if it's 15% of money...
Yeah, that's roughly 27 days of instruction. You came up with that much faster than me.
That was a ballpark.
Yeah, okay.
They don't expect me to be as accurate as they expect me.
I think we also talked about maybe possibly looking at raising that down the road, do we not? See how...
About what? I'm sorry.
The percentage?
Yes.
Kind of ride that and see how that feels, and then maybe consider raising it later.
Right.
If I recall, I think we talked about that.
Yeah, and again...
It's just another example of us trying to be fiscally responsible to our community.
Exactly. So just like you'd run your household, you can't always anticipate things that are going to occur.
Right.
And you can't insure against all those things either.
Correct.
So it's prudent to have...
Right, so we're talking about basically a rainy day fund.
Exactly.
In a sense, yes. And I think everybody in their personal lives practiced the need for some type of emergency fund for unexpected events, and this would be very similar to it. Again, it's the range that I identified, and as I was reviewing literature in actual districts, ranges from 10% to 25%. So the 15% is more approximate to the national best standard, the Government Finance Officers' Association, but it could be 25%, it could be 20%, whatever number the board would feel comfortable with as a starting point.
If I remember correctly, I think we were leaning towards starting at a lower end and see how that feels for a while, and then maybe adding to it in a couple of years. Something we felt was better than nothing.
Right, yes. Just to look at more data, would you work up the instructional days for 20% and 25%?
Yes.
Did we look at how this is going to, what kind of a strain that's going to put on our budget, Dan? Did we look at those numbers?
Not yet, and we're, that will be the next part of the discussion. There's a couple opportunities for us to fund that we're currently in the early stages of a levy cycle, as the board knows. State revenues are flat in good years. Tax revenues have inflation adjustments and grow very slowly, even though we have a strong local economy, and yet expenses go up. We're not always going to have the great fortune of 0% healthcare increases, and we have other expenses that we agree to at the board level where the economy presents to us. So there's a life cycle to every levy, and again, we had talked about, we were not going to be expecting another life cycle of 12 years as we did from 2004 to 2016, but we wanted to do better than the state norm of approximately four years, that we wanted to look at six years or so. And I believe we can fund this, given the positive variances in this year's budget and the extra expectations on investment earnings as the market continues to improve, at least for another year before we see a recession, that we should be able to fund most, if not all, of this initially without seriously disrupting that levy cycle.
That makes complete sense, when you were talking about that our investments performed a bit better than we had originally expected. We had higher collections and lower expenses, that this would be that little window where there'd be some wiggle room to put this money aside, and then it's there.
Yes, and the other thing with our run of very good fortune with healthcare costs, as you know, now in six of the last eight years, we've not had an increase in healthcare. We do self-insure our healthcare, and the initial funding of that and the annual funding's predicated on the expected rate increase, so there may be an opportunity to return some of that seed money that was provided back in 2006 to establish the self-insurance program. Might also be an opportunity, given our good fortune here the last few years.
Sounds like a good plan.
It was good fortune, but it was also good fiscal management.
Right.
Yes. It didn't happen by accident.
So what, Dan, what would we do, the fund, the fund itself? Are you expecting it to grow based on some investments? Would you put it into something like that so it can grow? It's not going to be in somebody's mattress somewhere, obviously.
Yes, we would dedicate, we have a board policy that expects me to allocate investment earnings amongst the funds that contribute to the investment. So I would, this money would be invested, any proceeds will be returned to this fund to help it grow as we need to incrementally occasionally adjust it.
Once this is established, it would be great to publicize it in the con, in the con Mennor, along with the other belt tightening and other efforts for managing our budget.
Yes, and I think we can talk about several strategies and tactics that we've employed that are beyond just business as usual to help demonstrate fiscal prudence.
And I think for our community, even though the economy has rebounded, for some people it hasn't. You know, some people are still feeling a big pinch, and it also shows that when fairer skies are the rule, that we're not just, well, just spend away, that there's always a very cautious movement toward thrift in service of excellence.
Yes.
So what can we expect as far as the next step and further information on this, Dan?
I will follow up in this week's board update on kind of a percentage equivalence, if we were to fund 20 or 25 days of instructional expense and more formally compute the 15-day, 15% how many days. And then we can talk about it again at the next board meeting and then proceed from there for a first reading in September.
Because it'll become a policy, won't it?
Yes, yes, and I don't, this will not delay the development of the fiscal year 19 budget, and again, with the funding opportunities will exist, even if we are deliberate in our thoughts on setting the initial amount.
Just to make sure I understand, your proposal was at 15%. You're also going to look at 20 and 25%, how many days of instruction that will get us, and also the 15, 20, and 25%, how that's going to impact our budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. All right, any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Dan.
Very much.
Well, thank you for this kind of...
Again, this is initial discussion, we'll have more information for stakeholders as this develops.
Yes, and again, I would like to bring it back, again, next month under unfinished business, prior to formalizing the draft for a first reading, if that's permissible and acceptable to the board.
Sounds good. We will watch for your update and further information. Thank you, Dan. All right, so no vote is needed at this time. Any other unfinished business? Moving on to new business?
Yes, I, as the board knows, we had an unexpected conflict for the July 5th special meeting that was set to do my annual performance review, and we were still working on potential dates that would be acceptable to all five board members, and I know Tom's not with us at the moment, but I was hopeful we could try to find a new date that will work for all five board members.
Sounds good. Do you have a couple of dates in mind?
No, whatever works for the board.
We had talked about Thursday, the 19th was a tentative date that was thrown out?
Yes.
That's still good for me.
Is that still good for you? Mary, did that work for you?
I'm sorry, the 15th?
No, Thursday, the 19th at 6:00 or 5:30, either one.
Works for me.
Yeah, because that was...
Thursday, the 19th?
Uh-huh.
I don't know if anyone's planning to go, but that's a retirement party for Ron Trab. I was planning to go to that.
I don't want to interfere with Mr. Mennor.
Do you know what time that's?
5:30 at Wildwood.
I mean, I'm good Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday that week.
Can we maybe look at another date?
What about the following week, Thursday, the 26th?
Nope. Is anybody available Wednesday, the 18th?
I am.
I'm available the 18th.
I'm not.
Okay.
Tuesday, the 17th. Can we hear Tuesday, the 17th?
I'm available.
I'm not.
Move into the following week.
Yeah, the following week is better. I could do Friday, the 20th. I could do...
Friday, Jenny?
I can't do that.
I could do the 26th for sure.
I'm good the 24th, 25th, or 26th?
I could do 26th. 24 and 25 are complicated.
I could do the 26th.
I can't do the 26th.
27?
Oh, no.
OH, taking my son to OH.
I O.
How about the 2nd?
Do we want to look at a Saturday?
How about the 25th of Wednesday?
We need to get this done this month.
Yeah.
25th works for me.
Wednesday, the 25th?
I can't do the 25th.
How about if we do it at 7 o'clock in the morning?
Oh, please.
Dan does not want...
I'm an early bird.
What about Monday, the 23rd?
Works for me.
Unless we do it later, like 7-ish.
I could do...
Yeah, that's fine.
I can do it later.
Up to midnight.
Till midnight, and then I'll call you when I wake up at 5:30, Jenny.
You know what, actually, I could probably do like a 6:30.
6:30 on the 23rd? That works for me.
Good.
Is anyone available the 23rd?
Yes.
That would work well for me.
Does it work for you, Dan?
Yes.
Because you're kind of important in there.
Yes, I will.
And according to the email from Tom, he's available the 23rd, too.
Oh, good.
23rd, 6:30 PM.
At the board office?
Yes, we'll meet in the Cardinal Room.
23, 6 o'clock, wait, 6:30?
Whatever time you say.
Yeah, I've got it.
He said 6:30 there.
Yeah, let's go 6:30. I'm going to be downtown, just to be safe, and that's going to be in the board office, Cardinal Room.
Yes.
That sounds good.
Sorry, Dan.
Oh, no problem. Thank you for working through that.
All right, any other new business? All right, we'll have hearing of the public on any items. All right, and we are going to move into executive session. I think I need a motion for that.
Yes.
And this is regarding evaluation of the superintendent.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
I don't think we're going to be voting on anything, will we? We don't expect to vote on anything. You can feel free to stay or leave if you'd like.
No, good. Perfect timing.
No vote.
Yes.